Budget workshop meeting of the school committee to order. Stand for the budget allegiance.
Budget allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll turn it over to Superintendent DeFalcough. Let's get this show going.
All right, thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. We have one item on the agenda for this evening, and that is to hear about the fiscal year '21 budget and the specifics from our two elementary principals, Dr. Jenny Remka and Ms. Christina Schaefer. And they're going to take some time tonight to share with us a bit more detail than we have seen about their materials and resources within their budget, and what we're looking for moving forward for next fiscal year, and then what is our existing staffing pattern, class size, and what we'll be looking for in FY '21 or for next school year. And so with all of that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Remka and Ms. Schaefer. Thank you so much, ladies, for being here.
Stephen. We're here to present our elementary budget, and the first one is we want to... You could consider budget because we want to fund all the current educational needs, and we also want to maintain current class size, which is between 18 to 25.
We're looking at funding some new innovative programs for... We'd like to do a STEM program in both schools and provide our staff with time to collaborate so that it's consistent for both schools. So, in all elementary schools, we put $30,000 in each school because there's three schools, so it would be $90,000 for the new ELA curriculums, textbooks/kits, whatever is decided. We left it kind of vague, so I know that the committee is working on some stuff, and we're getting to a final decision stage. They're going to be trying out some test-driving some curriculum.
And with the reading requests, we have teachers that train in Wilson this year, and so they would need some materials, are working with the, you know, identified student. So these are the lists of things that they would need for next year.
And some of them are other, like flexible seating options to help our students, a variety of books to have a variety of genres that the students are reading, as well as some other literature.
So for JFK and AFM, our reading teacher requested some of the reading materials, like large sound cards, Wilson notebooks, dictation books, et cetera. And our custodial have a couple items on there. One of says shop vat is used for vacuuming water, like when it's flooding or when they're stripping the floor. The one, I don't think we have one right... We actually don't have one right now at the complex. And also, the second item is the hand dryer, four-hand dryer, sorry, missing an S there. And currently, we have eight bathrooms, and four of the dryers is either sometime works, and one of them actually doesn't work, so we would like to replace that.
Can I go back to the shop vac? There is none in the building right now.
They're calling to Dennis, we don't have one.
Is there one in your building?
Um, I think so.
Do we know if there's one in middle school or high school?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
So for MES, so we have some additional reading teacher requests, Kindle charging station, and another F&amp;P assessment kit. We had some classroom teachers put some requests in. The kindergarten teacher was looking at some dry erase writing tablets and some scholastic books to support the reading with her students, as well as our first-grade teacher was looking at some words I use when I write books. So for those of you that may or may not be familiar with those, they are like a student dictionary of commonly-used words, so when they're writing, they can refer back to them and get the spelling of... Maybe they want to spell their aunt's name, and their aunt's name is Phyllis. They can go into that book that they may have asked the teacher to write down, and the teachers can write it in there for them if it is not in there already. So they also have the common sight words and stuff. That was a purchase I ended up making out of the principal's account this year, so we're looking at putting that into the budget. Mrs. Jones was actually spending time making her own books for the students, so we'd rather have her time toward the curriculum and the stuff she has to do on that end than making books for her students to assist with their writing. We also have the snow blower. You may remember last year we put that in.
We did.
It's back again.
The string was holding on.
So, in honor of Greenie's last day today, it is... We put that back in about 1,500 to 2,000. Our oldest snow blower is 29 years old, and our youngest snow blower is 13. The... It was either the first snowstorm or the second snowstorm we had this year, we went through one sharepin or two sharepins, so therefore that kills that snow blower until we have another sharepin to put it back in. So now, if you have to use the 29-year-old one, you're kind of working with that, so...
See, what you're looking at is current staffing at the complex, and the class size, again, between 18 to 25 right now this year. Some classes are 23 and some classes like 27, so not every class is like 24, 25. So with the largest population is in grade four, so that means next year, grade five will have those 123 students. Next year, we like to maintain all the staff, and again, grade five will be... The five teachers, we have five teachers right now in grade four, and next year will be five teachers in grade five. If you look at grade K, from the census, we have currently have 90 students, and we actually have two more coming in. We're giving them a tour next week.
Dr. Remka, just a point of clarity. Next year's staffing, is it, I think, is it switched?
Yeah, so there was an error.
Oh, okay, all right.
Right. So grade four right now, we have five teachers, so grade five, next year, will be five teachers, and grade four will be four teachers.
Right, but on the 2021, it has a...
So there was an edit made to this and we sent to be shared.
I'm sorry. Your hot copy actually is an hour.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you're right... I'm like, wait a minute.
It's my fault.
No, that's okay. Four and five gets five. So theirs is right up there. Ours is not right on the piece of paper.
And then, this is a list of specialists we have, and for next year, will be remain the same specialists. So we ask for one additional staff is a STEM teacher. As we say earlier, we would like to offer student STEM education, and with that said, student will receive technology education every... Currently, we have student receive technology education every other week, while Millville has received every week. So we like to kind of even it out, so we... Our student will have the same opportunity every week, have technology and slash STEM education.
And you need a full-time person for that?
Yes.
In order to cover all the slots?
And I know he's not on the slide, but our kindergarten student do not receive technology education right now.
So yours?
Yeah.
They receive STEM.
The kindergarten does?
Instead of tech, and they're going to transition into technology in the next month or so.
And yours don't have technology either, nothing?
They have, like, mega space. They go in there and have mega space every other week.
You know, would be helpful, could you clarify the difference for folks?
Because you're talking about, you're talking about STEM and technology. Do you want to just discuss so everybody understands?
Sure. So for Millville, our students go into the computer lab for technology and learn different components of the standards for the technology department. And STEM, they're doing some science and engineering type of activities with kindergarten students, and then we're going to work on, as the year goes on, them. Actually, even today, I was in the computer lab with Mrs. Rosenbaum and watching the kids manipulate the mice, and it was very difficult because their hands were so little. So that was a piece we were thinking even for next year to start them on tech a little earlier because they were having a hard time. And when they took the star in the fall, Mrs. Rosenbaum did it with them one-to-one on a computer, on a Chromebook. So that was the difference. They don't have the mice, the keyboards at home. Most of them are touchscreen to everything, so having them know how to use all those pieces was a big piece for next year.
So, backup for me, because I'm slow. In Millville, students K through five have STEM every week or just technology every week?
Technology.
They have technology every week. They do or do not have STEM?
Do not. Only K has it instead of technology.
Instead of technology. And they do not or do have time for a maker space?
We do not have maker space.
In JFK AFM, they have technology every other week?
Every other week.
They do or do not have STEM at all?
They have STEM every other week.
So, in essence, they both have something every week, it's just a different something. Because here you have just technology, and here you have STEM or technology.
Only your K, only your one.
I'm talking about K to five.
K to five, so it's every other week.
K to five, every other week, technology. Then every other week, STEM?
Every other week, STEM, yeah.
Right, so every week, they have something, technology or STEM.
Kindergarten?
Technically, yes.
I'm just doing, just let me do K through five for a sec.
You just want to know if there's a balance?
I'm listening to the answer. I just want to know if it's balanced.
So, they have the same amount. There might be differences between the two?
They might call it a different activity, but they both have a special every week.
They have a special, so technology slim every week, but STEM every other week. Every week, but grade five does not have STEM.
And who has a maker space?
We have a librarian actually, you know, rotate.
As part of library?
Yeah.
As part of library. So it's not part of technology, it's not part of STEM. But they have STEM or technology every single week?
Every week.
One or the other. And yours just have technology every week, no STEM?
Except for K, who has STEM.
Gotcha. Now, where would, did you want to go with that?
No, I was with you.
Okay.
I'm going with you, Jean.
I'm like, wait a minute, before I add somebody else. Okay, thank you.
So currently, Millville's got two slides for this part, so...
I'm sorry, I didn't know we're switching slides. I do have one question about the...
Yeah.
I don't know what, we don't have a page number, but the specialist staffing page, the .6 tech teacher, is that a shared position where the .4 is at the other school?
At Millville, yeah, correct.
Okay. I was just wondering if it was something like we would fill that person's part-time job with something else, but, okay, thank you.
So in Millville, we currently have 2.5 preschool teachers. The half-time preschool teacher also has a sub-separate classroom in the afternoon.
We cut somebody in half and they come in?
Yes, she only comes half her body one day.
Oh, cool.
So we have a total right now this year of 69 students in our pre-K program, and actually, we're adding more in this week. Kindergarten this year is currently 19. Grade one, we have one, is 26. Grade two is 20. Then we have the 2-3 this year, which is 14 second graders and seven third graders. The 3-4, there's two classrooms, one is 13. So the first number's the first grade and the second number's the second grade. And then 11 and 7. And then we have grade four, grade four, five, and then five as well. So we have one with the exception of the 2-3 fours. And then our specialists are on that, on the same... We have 1.4, the adjustment counselors, one, and the ELL, and we have our special education teachers down the bottom, which is 2.0. And then our tech, as that question was asked earlier, the technology teacher is shared between Millville. And actually, our art teacher is shared, and our PE teacher is shared. So Mr. Eisenberg goes .4 over to the JFK AFM complex, Mrs. Sharon goes .6 over to the JFK AFM complex, and Mrs. Carty goes .6 to the JFK AFM complex. And our library professionals only for Millville, and our music teacher is shared between the middle school and Millville. So the proposal for next year for our staffing is pre-K will remain at 2.5 with the .5 sub-separate in the afternoon. Kindergarten will be one. We have, the census came with 14, we're up to like 17 or 18 right now that have picked up packets, so, and we think we have one or two more. Grade one will be the current, so it'll be 19. Grade two is 26. Now, here's where we get the tricky part. Next year's grade three is 34 students, grade four is 31 students, and grade five is 40 students. So there'll be two staff with 20 students each. When we came to talk about the mixed-grade classroom, I talked about the possibility of the co-teacher for the grades three and four classroom. We also looked at the special education numbers to see how many pullouts students there would be on the current enrollment. Obviously, it changes because we may have students move in, we may have students come off educational plans, but based on what we currently have, grade three for next year that has 34 students will have, for ELA, they pull out, there's three students that get pulled out, which would be a total of 31 students during that, one of the ELA blocks. And then math has two students that get pulled out, which would be a total of 32 students. So we're looking at that co-teacher, which you'll see down the bottom, is supporting as well during that time. Grade three, I'm sorry, grade, this year's grade three. Grade four next year has 31 students, and then the pullout, there's four students on pullout for ELA right now, which would lead us with 27 students, and math would have three pullout, which would be approximately 28 students. In the inclusion pieces, there would be, definitely be paraprofessionals to support, as well as potentially a co-teacher for some of those times as well. So it would help bring the numbers down to a more appreciative ratio, I guess we'll call it, and support some of those students in the rooms. Any questions on that slide before I move further? And we do have, just so, this would be, if you look at the staffing numbers, it would be one staff reduction from this year. We would be reducing one staff member. And we do further, we actually do have, I know Dr. DeFalcough shared with you, we do have some staff potentially interested in job sharing. So that would be a possible solution to, so we'd like to reduce the staff number. Any questions? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jean.
Nope, nope, you had your hand up, go ahead.
I just, do we have an idea of what this co-teaching model looks like? Like what?
The shared position one? The shared one?
Well, I'm assuming that it's...
Or the person who's going to go in and support the other thing?
We're listing here as co-teacher. I'm hearing that it could be a job-share situation.
Co-teachers could be job-shared?
That's what I heard, that's what I understood.
So, okay. So now with Tammy's question.
I like when we agree, Jean.
I mean, obviously, we have to follow the contract first.
So somebody with grade three, some, grade three, kids show up day one, 34 lovely children, very well-behaved, sitting in 34 seats, homeroom, whatever. I know you don't call it whatever. Some of them will go off to math, some will stay in the room with Mrs. whatever, I'm calling her Mrs. because that's mostly what you got, and...
And a para.
But...
That's not para, that's a teacher.
But the para's there for a student. The para's not, is the para in there for the class or for a particular student in the class?
It depends on student needs. We do have some one-to-one paraprofessionals that are medical-based, and they do support other students in the classroom as well, so it's depending on the particular grade.
So then maybe those 34 students go to gym, then they come back, and the 30, the ones who didn't have math in the morning, I'm using, I'm just trying to envision, that didn't have math in the morning now have math in the afternoon, but now with the co-teacher?
No, they would stay together as a unit. So the unit would be like, grade, say, grade three. So the grade three unit would go to all the same specials together, they would go, they would have the same subjects, like math and ELA at the same time. It would just be the matter of a teacher bebopping from class to class to support the teacher, the other, the main homeroom teacher, and they would be just another educational professional in the room to support those students.
So they'd have math with 34 people in the classroom and two teachers.
But what happens when they go to music? Does that poor music teacher just get 34 kids, no paras, no other, just 34 kids for the music teacher?
So currently...
Just curious.
No, no, that's all right. So currently, the, almost, most of our specials are supported because of student needs. Special education need trumps what we have and where staff go. So some students need the special education support in the specials, and some do not. Some just need them, so it obviously depends on the needs. The current, next year's classes, there is, there are, there's definitely one that was a medical, and we may have another, so...
So can I ask Jill a question, if Jill is amenable to questions? If I'm a, if I'm a student in a classroom of 34 people, and I have a para who's supposed to be assisting with the needs that I have, how are they then assisting with the room?
So, as I heard Christina say, special needs does come first. So you put out students in a room, and there could be five students in the room who, it's not just a one-on-one, who they're assisting. So they are assisting those students, they are their, their primary responsibility. But that's not to say sometimes kids aren't working with the group, it could be a small group inside the door, some are specialists on the radio, but yes, if they're in there specifically...
It's to support the special needs, right? So we can't necessarily rely on them supporting the, let's say there's four that have a para with their, I'm just trying to see what this looks like.
So if those, if that paraprofessional is supporting, is in there to support those four students, those, those students may be working with paraprofessional at a side table to go over a skill in which the teacher's focus would be on the remaining students in the classroom.
And then where's the other teacher?
The co-teacher, they could be in the three or the four at that time, depending on the topic area.
So there, this is not like, kind of splitting, this is, they're 34 or 34, 24/7, whatever.
It's not divide and conquer, it's sort of put that extra person in.
It's true. No, they may be splitting up.
Yeah, can I, is it okay if I just try?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. So the scenario that Christine and I had worked through was, we'll look at, we'll take a specific grade, let's look at...
Grade three, 34.
Third grade, okay. So let's say it's an ELA block. So there are 31 students that would be left in the class after those three kids are pulled out. And what we discussed was, looking at a model, those three students are pulled for one of the blocks, right? Because there's, so there are two blocks, makes 90 minutes, right? So you have, you have two 45-minute blocks. So the pullout happens for one of those 45-minute blocks. So what we were discussing is that the kids are all together with the second teacher getting the direct instruction. When the teacher is done with the direct instruction, and the kids are actually practicing, they're reading, they're in reading groups, they're applying, they're learning, that the second teacher has an opportunity to either stay in that model, kind of pushed in and supporting the kids there, or he or she could simply take a section of the kids and take them out of there and work with them in a separate setting and provide some instruction that way to try to get the numbers, you know, the numbers down if that was necessary.
May, to that point, would, would it be designed where, next to these two classrooms, that there's some space that they can do that easily rather than carting, you know, would there be an empty room nearby?
So there'll be, obviously, we have to reduce the staff member, so we will have an extra room.
So they can just kind of go next door versus going around the building?
And it'll be like a full-size classroom. So they could take half of the class and put them in the full-size classroom.
And it may be a different half that they take for the ELA block versus a half they take for the...
And it could be skills-based, so if you're noticing, for example, in ELA, you're noticing kids are in trouble with inferencing, the teacher may take five or 10 of them in the other room and work on inferencing with them, while the, the other teacher, we'll call him the homeroom teacher, take, keeps the rest of the students in the room and works on developing, either furthering the inferencing or adding more to it.
So then they go to block math, and they may take a different people.
And that, some of that's going to be scheduling.
So is ELA always the same time every...
Oh, yes, next year, I can make it the same time.
Okay, because here's my concern. So today, I have ELA with my homeroom teacher, and she has, we all know that as much as we're following a curriculum, or we're following a plan, or we're doing a whatever, you teach differently than I teach, that differently than Tammy teaches. So today, I've got you, and you're teaching me inferencing, and tomorrow, I'm pulled out and I've got Erin, she doesn't know crap about inferencing, but she's doing her best because, you know, she's a math teacher, whatever, but she's doing, doing a great job, but it's different than what you told me yesterday. And now I've got ELA, fourth period of the day, and now I've got co-teacher...
Yep.
Who knows way too much about inferencing, and I don't want to listen to it. So that's my concern, like, like...
And to follow that, then, then who's scoring? So I have a lot of tasks, I have a lot of questions about the co-teaching that maybe not, is not a budget conversation.
Sure, sure.
As a co-teacher, like, there needs to be training, and there needs to be personality checks.
And there also needs to be...
Because it will not work.
And if they're doing two and a half days in two and a half days, or three weeks in two, two the next, there needs to be a lot of, like, lockstep with the two teachers.
There's going to be three teachers in that case.
Technically, three, yes, in some cases.
So that's even more...
And if I can build on that, because I think, I think you're, directly to your point, and I think people would want to listen to someone that knows a lot about inferencing and just saying, but if they say they didn't, but I, but I think the key here is that the teacher of record, that homeroom teacher, is the one delivering the core instruction. That, that individual is delivering the core instruction. The, that second teacher is the one that is either in the support role or pulling out and reteaching, to your point, needing clarity of roles, who's doing what, personalities, all those things are hugely important, but so that the kids are not confused, because they, you know, kid, they do.
They do.
They get used to a habit and routine and a teaching style, and that's, you know, we get that. They need to have that core instruction delivered by the same individual. Otherwise, those things could happen.
And I think it goes further, because now you have this teacher who apparently, the co-teacher, he or she potentially isn't grading anything, so then, so then I, it, I think I just have to process the model you just explained before I, because as a teacher, I'm like, whoa, that's interesting.
Well, so I think a big piece is scheduling this year.
As a budget thing, this is what's, I mean, scheduling, yes, I think it's, it's a nightmare, and I think, but here's the budget piece that I guess is bothersome to me, but I'd like to know what it looks like. I'm paying that one teacher who's ultimately responsible for 34 people, kind of the same I'm paying the person who comes in, I mean, I realize half, I realize 19 hours or 20 hours or whatever, but if you, hourly, the same price for that person who's coming in to support and not, I mean, maybe co-developing a lesson, I don't know, I guess I just don't know.
I'm also looking at, from, going from the classroom, the, I always worked with the special ed teacher, and we always took, like, we shared it. So we, we share the grading, you share the report cards, you share the report card comment writing, so there is going to have to be a lot more communication.
Sharing it now with three, not just two.
So is it a definite that the, if we went, if we went with a co-teacher, is it definite that the co-teacher would be the shared teachers? Is that the place for them?
That's all I'm asking, go back to contract, because the contract states specific language as to the reduction force and all that, so that would have to go back to contract.
But not necessarily. To your question.
Because that may, that may solve some of the worry that is on our face.
Right.
If it's just one person.
We're already moving someone in and out of a classroom, is it, does it interrupt it to make it two people?
But I want to, but even in that model, it doesn't have to be two different people, because you have two half-time people, one could be assigned to three, one could be assigned to four, and they're there for half the day, so you're delivering your math and ELA instruction in that block of time. Do you know what I'm saying? So it doesn't necessarily have to be...
So you do half the day, so I guess in my mind, I would imagine that someone who works part-time would want to do, I work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, versus I'm going to come in...
But that would go back to contract.
Two hours a day. So I guess that was the other part that I was processing.
So the two that offered the, the job share did say either two and a half, or I think one, it was a three, two, so like rotate one way, three ways.
So they don't want half days.
So that's different, yeah.
But respectfully, we set those parameters, right? We have to build the structure we need and then fill it with the people that are interested, not build the structure for the people that want to do it.
And, and I get that you're getting a lot of questions, and I appreciate you trying to answer them when you don't know. It's just like all of us trying to, you know, kind of figure out how this, this works, you know, financially, what this will cost, and is it in the best interest of the student, having said all of that? In my mind, it's still a better model than the split classroom.
Yeah. One thing that, if a worst-case scenario came out, I did have another option, so my mind has been going...
I'm sure.
...100 miles now with the ways, because we have such difficult class sizes, for lack of a better term right now, to split a class of 31 into 15 and 16, it's very difficult. So now we have to get creative in the way to do this with our current language and the regional agreement. and the regional agreement. So, um, and same with thirty-four, seventeen and seventeen, you know, and those are hard num-, they're hard numbers. Forty is much easier to break into twenty and twenty then, so if we have six and nine more move in, we'll be good. We can break them all to two, so.
But we won't be able to afford the teachers.
And we do appreciate that, Christine, that you understand that. It's just, um, just making sure that kids' needs are met and not creating more of a, an issue than you're trying to solve, I think is always our, my thought process.
And that was a discussion, we actually had this today, actually, about just the model of if we can do the schedule, so having certain pieces, when, every year is new, you basically throw all the pieces up and start over again with schedules. So having that mindset with that, we can intentionally schedule the full instruction block during that first time, that first of the two math or ELA blocks, and then make that, so versus this year, some of them, the students might be getting pulled out for special education services during the first block of math and pushing in towards the second, which we can make sure that in these cases, that's, the schedule's, you know, impacts that, so.
Do you do like a big puzzle on the floor?
Uh, pretty much is. Or my bulletin board has tons of posters on it with pushpins. Any other questions before?
The magnets?
We have magnets with all the people's name and that's how we do it.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of crazy. All right, you can come this summer.
All right, go ahead.
All right. So, um, some additional staffing. I'm also looking for a STEM teacher to, um, just continue to enrich our science program. The purpose of this would be to allow our reading specialist to provide support, intervention support for our students instead of be a specialist. So then we can focus on teaching the students that are struggling with the reading and focusing on skills that they need. We can really focus on that and let them not be a reading specialist and let the kids go to STEM and have that now instead of the reading piece. And then in addition, I'm looking to add the substitute principal back at Millville Elementary School. We haven't had it for a few years. Um, I was it prior to that. Um, but this person would be a go-to person if I am out of the building for a meeting, for training, for anything. If I'm out sick, they would be the person that staff would know who to go to or who to call if they are in, um, need of support, so. Any questions?
Yes.
Who is that now? Like who, so when you're not there, do you?
My assistant principal's not in trouble all year, so no, nobody right now.
So do you get phone calls and texts while you're out of the building or?
Sometimes, or I just have a, a lot to deal with when I come back. Um, some of it is, um...
So like disciplinary of the kids?
Depending on the severity. Um, right now, I do have a staff member that helps with some of the more severe issues that can't wait till I come back. Um, and honestly, our staff is fantastic at Millville and they all jump in to help, even the classroom teachers. I came back yesterday from, uh, Tuesday from training for our focused schools and two staff were dealing with a pretty significant issue in my office. So, um, and they had it well under control, but to have one person for staff to go to instead of, and that I can be in constant communication with, with issues with students or stuff that we need to deal with, or maybe even things that not all staff know as far as goings-on, going-ons of students in their lives. So that person would have all that information.
That's just, it's our only building without.
A second.
An assistant or, so, or an assistant, because.
So right now, if for some reason I'm out, Jenny knows, like Jenny has said, have Priscilla call me or whatnot, if she's in the building as well, so.
Can I ask a question about STEM? It, that would be a new special. So every other week or every?
I think right now, the plan, I think we should be able to get every week with what we have.
So ideally, between the two, you, your preference would be STEM and technology for all students every week. So do they have art every week?
Every other.
Every other. Do they have gym every week? So they'd have, or?
Music they have every week.
Every week. But just once a week?
And reading, right now, they have every week.
Once a week.
At Millville, and you guys have something different, you have guidance?
Guidance. So, so at the complex, my counselors teach.
Guidance.
Guidance. So, Millville's a little different, they, they push in. Um, and I do want to make it, you know, I, I think I didn't make myself clear about the STEM and technology. Bodies are bodies. I have a librarian, uh, I mean, a library paraprofessional, I have a point-six tech teacher. So what happened is, because we have a mega space, we have the library, it's kind of mixing with the library. So that means my library is every other week. I don't know if you have every week or every other week. So some, something is giving. So I'm not, I don't want to paint a picture that I have technology in STEM every week.
Right.
So the next slide, um, is looking at staffing, additional staffing, and it's actually shared for all of us. Um, so the only thing that would be new or different than this year is the first one with the little star or the arrow next to it, is an early childhood, um, planning, teaching and learning coach. And then the, the other elementary planning, teaching and learning coach would support like grades three to five, and then the early childhood would do pre-K to two. And that would help this focus on a smaller range of knowledge that you have to have and be experts at to be able to coach those people. So you have a smaller focus. You can hone in more on specific skills by having the three grades or four grades.
So with all of the requests, well, a few requests, the budget impact, we already mentioned that we want all of our students, um, receive STEM education, STEM and technology education every week. And also the coaches, uh, what we have now and with the additional coach, we want to provide the three-tier support. Tier one is all staff and tier two would be doing PLC, providing like grade level support and ILT. Um, tier three is probably the most intensive, providing two to three teachers with high-level support that they need. Um, with all, you know, with the budget impact, also provide time, teacher time for PLC. Um, I know Millville right now is weekly PLC and that the complex is every other week, uh, teachers have PLC. So doing PLC, they would collaborate, analyze data and in order to better support our students and their learning.
We've got just fun ones at the end. The last two slides are just fun pictures. So these are some fun FMJFK pictures and, uh, Millville. Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have a question, I guess, for Matt and Jason. What's in here is in our revised numbers or no?
What's in here is in the, um.
Phase two.
That original sheet of.
The phase two. Oh, so this is the phase two numbers?
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
That is.
That's it, huh?
That's it?
All right. Concerns, comments, anywhere people want to see this go, any other questions? Clearly we need more, how the, the cost of the extra floater person, how that works itself out. Does it save us money, cost us more money?
Well, so we, so there are, there is one teaching position at Millville that we can eliminate, right?
Right, right.
So, yep. And so if, so then we decided not to reduce by another teacher to help support that grade three and four.
Floater.
Um, and so if we were to reduce that position, the numbers would stay thirty-four and thirty-one in grades three and four. Um, the budget bottom line would save somewhere between fifty and sixty thousand, depending upon, you know, the salary of that particular teacher, but.
But if we do two part-time, two, two, a job share, does a job share save us any money?
From insurance or any, any, any money?
Right.
Right, any money.
Any.
Any pocket.
Twelve cents.
In this scenario, it, it.
Whoever gets paid more would have to be saved.
Whoever what?
What was that?
Like if you have two teachers both getting.
And one was an eighty thousand and one was a fifty thousand.
Yeah, the fifty thousand salary, you say, imagine it doesn't appear anymore and then one's getting, you're paying sixty-five for one teacher.
So to that point, um, when we talked about going revising the budget with the real numbers.
Right.
So originally, we put in, you know, like fifty thousand dollars to reduce a teacher.
Right.
But by going to this cost share, we saved an additional twenty-some-odd thousand dollars. Because both of the individuals are significantly higher on the pay scale. One is in the eighties, I believe, and the other is upwards as well.
That's all you meant by real numbers. Was that, was that specific salary?
That's specific salary.
Yeah, okay.
But if, uh.
But do you pay two insurances instead of one when you do a job share?
I can't, I can't speak to whether or not these individuals are on our insurance right now.
Without using individuals in this scenario, if, if two new people stepped up, don't get, when you have a part-time teacher.
Do they get insurance?
Do they get insurance? And so, so then we would be paying two insurances, which then maybe the cost savings of salary isn't as pretty as it looks. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But does, is a part-time person allowed to have insurance?
Yes.
She's saying yes.
Yes.
What? Who's saying yes? You're saying yes?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say. There are, if they're getting, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It's not a change.
I feel like it's not, like more expensive.
Well, but it, but it, but it would be a change if they're both getting it now, but if you said, no, no cost sharing, just one person, it would be a change because you'd save one insurance.
Correct.
Right?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I was, I understood what Tammy's point was.
I just don't think that's as big of an impact as the salary savings. Like to say it's two, then we're not saving any money.
No, 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 I'm just, we're, we're trying, we're trying to get a two-thousand-dollar, um, snow blower so that, you know, they don't have to wind it up. So if this saves us two-thousand dollars, we have place to get a snow blower. If it doesn't save us two-thousand dollars, you're winding it up again.
But in the same respect, they may, someone may not have insurance now and have a life change that they need it and it still has to be available.
That's where you get into the gritty of personnel that we cannot talk about at this table.
So.
Right. No, but I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, does cost sharing a position clearly saves us salary, does it save us anything else? Is it, is it a benefit, cost-saving over the implication of having potentially three teachers children have to interact with?
So I think we'd have to get into a further conversation on, for that answer, to figure out, probably contractual, how we allow employees to do a cost share or job share. Because I feel like it would almost either need to be that position or not need to be that position. So if it's, if it's based on seniority and we're not going to have any options on who ends up in that position, then it, and it's not effective for the kids, then it's something, even if it saves us eighty-five thousand dollars, we can't, if it's not the best thing for, I, I don't see how we could even do that. I think we need more answers on contractual before we can.
I think from a budgetary perspective, just cause for the topic for.
Today.
Yeah, for today, I think the questions we're asking around the budget impact are the right questions. I think, I think those make sense and I think to Erin, to your point too, like we're gonna have to get into the weeds of that, definitely at some point.
I was gonna say.
Once we figure out how we want to, the committee decides that they want to allocate the resources.
Because it doesn't necessarily have to be those two teachers that are doing the co-teaching. That could be one. So then it is only two teachers impacting.
I know, yeah, yeah.
The classrooms.
That, that split could be somewhere else.
Yep.
Agreed. And I was saying, it's, it's, it's hard to compare the reality numbers to the hypothetical numbers. If we go by the hypothetical numbers, yes, there's the two insurance payments, but the loss of one person. But when we look at the actual people and determine whether or not they're taking insurance and what their salaries are, it, it does have that significant of a difference.
Is this only for next year? Would the job share be maintained?
So I think a lot, yeah, I, I don't know. I think it depends on, so the challenge is when you're at thirty-one.
Yeah.
Your rate on that, I mean, yeah, I mean, your rate on that threshold of.
It'd be nice if we had that regional agreement.
You know? But that turns into.
I was crunching the numbers and we'd be using fewer staff and have class sizes between twenty and twenty-four.
You keep moving with your.
Two less staff.
Add everybody up. You have wonderful.
And it wouldn't fluctuate like this from year to year.
Correct.
Yeah, I, and I do want to just give a, and I know that everyone up here feels the exact same way, so I don't think I'm saying anything out of turn, but a shout-out to the Millville crew because at least the past couple of years, we're kind of, we keep reinventing, like ourselves in terms of how we're gonna tackle this issue.
It's crazy.
And to Sarah, exactly to your point, that's the bigger issue in the room.
Yes.
Right? Like this silliness can stop if we can get that fixed. Because how many times do we have to reinvent the way we're gonna do this, right? And it's, I know everyone feels that way, but it's, you know.
But it's not, it's not us that's suffering from, as a result of. It's a seven-year-old and an eight-year-old who, you know, one day is in classes with another person and the next day is in classes with thirty-four people and the next day has three different teachers.
Yeah. That's a lot. But you gotta do what you gotta do.
But maybe not. So, Matt, can you just tell, say the number one more time on what the actual savings was for?
I don't remember the specific number offhand. It was in the twenty, it was in the twenty-thousand-dollar range. It was twenty, yeah, it was about twenty-six, it was about twenty-six thousand.
And that's on top of one FTE.
Fifty thousand, yeah.
Okay, so.
That was as opposed to the forty-five. We, we put a marker in, it was a little unrealistic. I think forty-five is a little low. We had a marker in for one position at forty-five thousand. So it was about twenty-six thousand over the forty-five thousand.
But it, so it would also have a savings on another unemployment if, if we did eliminate the two.
Correct. That's the other thing, when you factor all of it in, unemployment costs.
I, I know it's not what we need to talk about tonight, but I feel like we would, we are already compiling a list of questions for the contractual part of it. Um, when Sarah just said, is this just one year? So where would we stand contractually if we allowed these two teachers to start something this year and we couldn't continue a job share next year? If, if our regional agreement went through?
Yeah, that too.
Or, so where do we stand contractually? Just for another conversation, um, so my first question is how, how is it decided how the job share goes and how bound are we to it after we allow it for one year?
Yeah.
Just for later conversation.
So, so it, so it's going to depend on whether or not the, the job share people lose seniority.
So the two job share people said for next year, they, that they would, are allowed to do it for next year. They did not necessarily commit to.
And they wouldn't lose any of their seniority.
Yeah.
But do they gain it?
But I'm thinking that if, if it's a job share position, it has to go to the whole district, not just the Millville. It has to be posted as a job share position. So anyone in, you know, anyone at the elementary level could, could opt to, to apply for that position. It just doesn't concern Millville.
But it would go, it would go by seniority. So in that case, it would probably save more. Because the most.
No, the teacher isn't selected on by seniority. It's principal, it's the principal's decision on who she wants to put in it.
Yeah. So I think it's just a deeper conversation for.
Wait on it, no, yeah.
The second part is.
The position is not a job share position.
What?
Right.
The clarity is that it's, if we're talking about any of this, none of these positions are intended to be job share positions. We, that wasn't our initial focus. The only reason a job share came into place is because two teachers who happened to be in the district said, hey, we'd like to share a job, whatever it may be, and how do we do that?
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, Tammy.
So I think we need to clarify, this job share was never intended to be anybody at this table's position, like we want to create these job shares. That wasn't it.
Nope.
Two people approached. Two people approached, I'm assuming Jason and Christina, to say, hey, we'd like to job share, and how we go about that is absolutely, has to be talked about with, with the, with the, I'm pointing to Esther, but, um, the union.
No, for sure.
But again, it's not that we're posting a job share position.
It's not a new position.
It's that we're positioned, we're, we have a, we have a position and they want to share it.
And again, and I, I want to underscore, we may not want to do that.
Right. We may not want to do that, right.
We won't.
The only, the only thing that's potentially new, there, there used to be 10 teachers, and that may not be, I'm just making a number.
Right.
Okay, 11 teachers. Now there are nine that we need and 10 that's a, I'm going to call it floater because I got nothing else, co-teacher, whatever you want to call it. That's the new piece. That's the posted piece, if you will. But the two people of the 11 who essentially lost, I mean, there's very much prescription about who can move and how you can move and who, who can bump who and who, so you can sit in Charlie's seat. I mean, it, you know, it's real, it's very well scripted.
Yeah.
So that piece follows the script. If and after that piece is done and two teachers come and say, you know, we'd like to, to share this so that we both don't lose Charlie's sheet, then that's up to, and that's what I asked at the last meeting, that's up to you all.
Yeah, yeah, and, and just so everyone, anyone watching this understands where this piece even came from, when we looked at this opportunity of having potential for, how do you, how do we best support the grade three and grade four, this concept of this kind of support teacher or a second teacher, co-teacher model, floater model came in play, and that's when two staff said, hey, I don't know if this will help, but if it does, we'd be willing to do this. So we put it on the table, because at this point, we're trying to be as creative as possible to figure out how to best support those two grades, but you're both 100% correct in that, if, if that's not what we need, well, that's just not what we're going to do, you know?
And it does help because it makes the 11, 10.
Right.
As opposed to.
Right, there's an elimination of one position.
Of one, right.
So as opposed to actually losing an employee, these individuals are saying, I'll take half and they'll take half.
Yeah. But just, you know, some people of the history behind that, where that kind of originated from.
Any other budget, budget things? No? We are again, Tuesday?
Yes, for middle and high school, Tuesday at 5:30.[1732.62]